So this is Mr. Veal, I'm going to call the October 28th, 2020 planning board meeting to order. Before we make any introductions, I'm just going to read off the emergency order. That the Chair and Vice Chair of the Nottingham Planning Board have found that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor of New Hampshire as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-08, boards thereof are authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's emergency order. The Nottingham Planning Board is utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in the meeting. I don't think I've used that word that many times in my life. So that said, I'm going to go around the room, and we'll do a roll call to identify the members present. Mr. Groenhees, the Chair, indicated that he likely would not be able to make the meeting tonight. So we'll start with Mr. McKinnon.
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, here.
Ms. Mooney?
Here.
Board of Slickman, Rep. Tyler Eaton?
Here.
Myself, Ed Veal is present, and Mr. Groenhees is not. For alternates, I know we have Robert Davies. Is that correct?
Here.
And do we have Leanne Gass?
Yeah.
Excellent. So for the record, I'm going to see Ms. Gass for Mr. Groenhees. She'll be participating in voting, and Mr. Davies for the open seat left by Mr. Clough. He'll also be fully participating in voting tonight.
Thank you.
They're voting for to pass the things.
And so we have a lot of people in the room tonight. So we're going to take the items in order on the agenda. The case in order, what I ask is you'll notice if your connection gets slow, sometimes turning off your video is helpful and just go into audio. If you'd like to speak during the public comment, you can raise your hand, and one of the administrators will let me know, and then we can address you and unmute you. So the first item on the agenda for tonight is Case 20-007-DR. That's an application from Joseph Falzone requesting a design review for a conventional plan consisting of 14 lots and approximately 2,000 feet of road and a cul-de-sac. The property owned by Diane Monte is located on Guile Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, identified as tax map 40, Lot 1. So the applicant is here. I see Mr. Falzone, thank you for joining us tonight. I'll let you give us a quick overview of it before we go to staff for a review of the application and actions on that.
Evening, everyone. This is actually Scott Cole, Joseph Falzone. I just want to do a mic check. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So we're here this evening for a design review. I think most of the people are aware of this property. This is the third time we've been in front of the Board now on this property. We were on in front of the Board recently, I believe a month and a half ago, where we had a design review for a concept of seven lot. At that time, it became a question on another applicant into the requirements of having to go to ZBA for a wetlands impact. So going back to the drawing board to cover all of our basis, Joe is supposed to look at a design that would be a by right design, not impacting any wetlands. So hopefully the somebody, I don't know if the town has it, I could put that up, the new one. So basically, we went back and we did a normal conventional design that would illustrate what could be done by right and not going to the actual zoning board. So we did a conventional subdivision that shows 14 two-acre lots. Each lot would have 30,000 square feet of building area with 200 feet of frontage. And they would all be on proposed septic well. There we go. So this here represents what would be a conventional subdivision based on the regulations not going to ZBA. This would have a proposed cul-de-sac, as you can see, with roughly 2,000 lineal feet. Be a pretty much straightforward design. Now with this in mind, the seven lot frontage is still something that we would like to discuss and go forward with. However, that now basically would require some input from the planning board to go to the ZBA. Joe has actually gone to the Conservation Commission about the both plans. They are actually in favor of the seven lot subdivision being larger lots and you know, less, there'd be no infrastructure or anything like that. So our basis tonight is to illustrate and show the Board this by right plan, also knowing that we have the seven lot frontage plan that we would like to actually pursue and just get the Board's opinion on both. You know, answer any questions if there is any.
All right, thank you. At this point, I'll just turn it over to Ms. Casella for staff review on the application.
Hi, everyone. I'm Stephanie Casella. I am the contracted town planner for the town of Nottingham. As far as I know, this being just a design review, most of the former staff review details are still applicable. I think the big question is just what plan the Board is in favor of and why. I would encourage the Board to illustrate exactly why they're in favor of either one and what issues either zoning or design will, that will implicate. Unless there's anything specific you want me to address, Ed.
No action needed on accepting an application at this stage, correct?
Nope.
No motion, thank you. All right. So we had the overview and everything. I'll turn it to to the Board to have some discussion before we go back to the applicant for additional details as needed and before opening up to the public hearing. I know we have a couple of letters or emails to the Board.
Looks like we have a, Leanne has raised her hand.
Joanna, I was just wondering if you could put up the picture of the seven lot plan as well?
I don't think I can put up both at the same time, but I can definitely pull that one up.
This is Buzz. Can I ask a question?
Yep.
I don't remember the last time we approved a conventional subdivision with a cul-de-sac.
It, we, I know the subdivision regs are, do allow for it, the ones that were updated in, I think it was 15. But they are limited to serving no more than, I'm just reading it, 20 residential units in a conventional subdivision or 40 in an open space development. There is a notation, though, that in no event shall dead-in streets exceed 2,000 feet be approved unless alternative provisions approved by the Nottingham Fire Department and planning board are in place to provide emergency ingress egress. So that would be something we would want, want some details from the applicant from.
Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting for that plan, I think I did state, but just so everybody was aware, we are right at that 2,000 mark for the cul-de-sac length.
Okay, and that's the 2,000, is that the, is that the lollipop end of it?
That'd be to the throat of the ball, which I believe is by the definition.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Can I add something, Mr. Chairman? This is Joe Falzoni.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
One of the purposes of first going to the Conservation Commission and then coming to you to get direction was it made no sense to me to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals first and have them send me back for an opinion to both the Conservation Commission, where this is to do with wetland, and then to the planning board. So the purpose tonight is I'm not going to go to the Zoning Board of Appeal if you don't want to support it and you prefer the 14 lot, because it wouldn't make any sense, and I'd just be wasting the town's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Veal, at some point, could I have the floor? This is Susan.
Yep, you're up.
Mr. Falzoni met with the Conservation Commission on October 19th, a week ago on Monday, and presented both designs, a seven lot subdivision, which had no internal road, and the second design for 14, which had the 2,000 cul-de-sac road. We discussed how to lessen wetland impacts with the seven lot design that does, that would impact approximately 3,000 square feet of wetland. And he has said that he would install echo passages at these impact sites so wildlife can travel through and under the driveways. Additionally, we also looked at lot sizes. In the, in the 14 lot subdivision, five of the 14 lots would be under 2.1 acres in size. The largest single lot in the 14 lot would be 16.42 acres. In the seven lot subdivision, the largest lot would be 35.73. So in consideration of preserving open space, minimizing impervious surfaces, whether it be roofs of houses and garages, driveways and the cul-de-sac, the Commission unanimously supported the seven lot subdivision. And keeping with rural character, only two of the lots would have houses that would be visible to people passing by on Guile Road. All the others would have longer driveways and would be screened from the road. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Anderson. I'd like to just chime in as well. Yeah, thank you, Susan, for bringing up that meeting and that information. I found that very helpful to hear because from my point of view, I, it seems to me that the seven lot subdivision definitely fits Guile Road much better than a 14 lot subdivision. Also, there are other positives that I see. One, just being cost to the town eventually, having road maintenance where the seven lots would not require that. And just fits the large lots with houses set back just fits much better.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. I also want to say that certainly with the seven lot subdivision, there'd be only half the traffic and half the road noise.
I left that. Thank you, Susan.
Any other Board comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of thoughts that I can chime in on. I think I agree with Gary and Susan on this, that ultimately I think I would favor the seven lot. Although I'm usually not a fan of long skinny lots, I definitely understand that's really how we have to get our buildable area on this layout. And then when I look at the 14 lot, I think I see how, how small, how much wetlands some of those lots have. And I could definitely see some issues with citing houses, which becomes an issue for code enforcement later. And I do like that the homes in the seven lot configuration are set back from the road. The shared driveways work in this scenario. So I'd say my feeling is the seven lot is my preference over the 14 lot at this time.
This is Leanne. I'm also in favor of the seven lot plan over the 14. Just think it fits better in with that area and the town in general. I just feel like it would pick a better better plan.
This is Buzz. In my opinion, or in my recollection, we have not approved a subdivision with a cul-de-sac unless it was the only reasonable way to do things. So in that, that being the case, I think the seven lot is a very acceptable solution.
Yeah, and looking at the plan, the cul-de-sac option, to make that a out-and-out type of situation where there's an ingress and egress, you'd have to, I can't see how you could do that without having a pretty significant wetland crossing itself. So.
Tony's right.
So before we open it up to the public, I just want to give the applicant the chance to fill in anything we didn't discuss just now. And if not, then I'll open up the public hearing and I'll read off. We have a couple of letters that came in, so I'll read those in and see if those address.
I'm fine at this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just give me a moment. He's got to pull up the letters.
I'm so glad you had to use this computer thing.
I don't.
And for anybody that's, that's joined us by phone or is watching, that is what is going to like to speak. So I'm going to, we did receive a few letters in regards to this, and a butters letter and a butter statement. So I'll read those off into the record. And alls I ask is that when we do open the public meeting, that we, in honor of everybody's time and to keep the meeting moving and productive, that we try to eliminate repeat testimony. So you could definitely raise your hand and say that I agree with such and such if you're not listed on the abutter letter or, or anything like that, but. So. So I'm going to, it's 7:20 PM. I'm going to open the public hearing by first reading the the butters letter dated October 28, 2020.
And you have a request on the chat, I think.
Oh. Move my screen.
I think that's what Joanna was trying to get at.
Sorry.
Sorry. Just a request, I think, to read, read the letter themselves, I think.
Oh, yeah, if someone's here, that was a a, an author of that letter. I'm fine with that. Let me just scroll down to the bottom of it and see. I will, so I'll do that letter. Secondly, let me get to the other letter first then. The abutter statement from Amanda Sherland. Amanda's not on, is she? I do not see that name. Okay, so I'll read that one first. This is dated October 28, 2020. Good evening. My statement here tonight is in reference to the proposed development of Guile Road. I would like to respectfully urge the planning board to strongly consider what they are continuing to allow development-wise within our community. Mr. Falzone has continually and consistently taken advantage of Nottingham's land as a source of profit for himself. But I understand the pendulum of progress is forever changing. Let us consider what we have been given and cherish for our small community to pass down to the next generation. We are not an exterred greenland or even stratum where Mr. Falzone resides. We are Nottingham, a town with our, a town with our own ideals and traditions. Mr. Falzone will clearly not rest till every last buildable lot has been built upon. This hour proposes an ever-growing problem for the town of Nottingham. Infrastructure such as our school facilities, stress on fire and police services, and increased taxes are all being affected. Please consider the implications of our small-town values and atmosphere that we cherish and hope to protect. Thank you for your time. By and Amanda Sherland, McCrillis Road. So all I ask to during public hearing is that you make sure that comments and everything are addressed to the Board, not to the applicant, and that we keep it based on the application itself and not personal. So we did have a request from Kathy Mansager. Joanna, would you mind unmuting Kathy?
I believe Linda's going to read on behalf of our community here.
Yeah, and you're, you're one of the people that was signed on for the one that's the letter drafted by Guile Road residents. The butters. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll let you go ahead and read that one.
Can Linda unmute herself because I can't find her? She's raising her hand there.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Is that correct?
Yes, you are.
Okay. The letter that I received, part of the letter discusses the 14 houses cul-de-sac. So I'm going to refrain from portions of that letter that, because I think the 14 house cul-de-sac is now something that is going to go off by the wayside. I don't want to, you know, reiterate things that aren't going to be. That's a way, that would be a waste of time. But the comments that to be made, when, when you were speaking briefly about infrastructure of the town, the police, the fire, schools, road maintenance and recycling center are also things that need to be considered. Also, what we view in our master plan community that has all of the following characteristics, which are open farm fields, farm buildings and barns, unfragmented forests, stone walls, tree-lined scenic roadways, dark skies, slopes and hilly terrain, ponds, streams and waterways of high quality for fishing and boating, small historic villages and crossroads, historic homes in the New England vernacular. Another thing that wasn't touched upon is the noise factor. With trees being cut down, there's not a noise ordinance in the town yet. I think it's something that needs to be addressed because this is definitely going to impact. I currently, I mean, there's not even any construction going on. I live down at the other end of Guile Road, and I can hear music from three or four houses up when people are playing music. So the other thing that is brought up is that the wildlife impact. The area between McCrillis Road and Route 152 in Lee are the last remaining unobstructed wildlife crossings of Guile Road. These things are extremely important. And I know you're taking this consideration of these seven houses. You need to really think in your heart and soul because you'll walk away from this and go to your next project or the next project will resume. And, and you know, wildlife is definitely going to be impacted in one fashion or another. So a lot of consideration needs to be thought about and concerns of protecting them and keeping them safe and the beauty of our, our little town as it is. Let me see. As I said, I don't want to reiterate things. Oh, one thing that is so dear to my heart that should bother everyone, that if you have a heart at all, is that the issue about human remains possibly being in those grounds. Nobody has yet shown a report or knows or said anything at all about where exactly these remains are. And definitely it's documented that there are remains in those grounds. That needs to be looked at. That need, that's, I mean, that's desecration of grave sites. And I don't even know how prospective buyers would feel knowing that they're on a grave site. So that needs to be found out where these grave sites are. And especially to, two of them are thought to be veterans, military veterans. And it's unthinkable to think that you could just lay your head on the pillow at night and not think about something like this. So that, that really is, is something that hits, hits me pretty hard and should most people. The groundwater level, maintaining that. Any dense development, the developer should be required to present detailed engineering plans for an adequate number of water level, water level monitoring wells for the protection of the existing wells of the butters and nearby residents on all sides of the proposed development. The developer should also be required to establish a fund to monitor the water levels in the monitoring wells once per month for a minimum of three years or as many years as the butters and nearby residents in the town shall deem appropriate. The cost of such monitoring by a fully qualified independent contractor shall be determined in advance by the developer and agreed upon by the town prior to the approval for any development plan. And the cost of monitoring the program and reporting to the town should be fully funded advanced by the developer. And in the event that the groundwater use is proven to be adversely affecting the yield of water of a butters, and we need to look at this, we had a horrible drought, a terrible drought. We don't know what's coming. There must be a protocol for providing compensation to the butters for the need to drill new wells or deepen their existing wells. Okay, and again, it's referenced about the 2020 drought and the real significant concern and impact of a high-density project on existing water supplies. The light pollution affecting butters, neighbors and wildlife, all street lighting, street-type lighting at individual residences should be required by the town to be baffled or shaded toward the residence for which they are intended. They should not be allowed as general widespread area lighting. This will limit the impact on butters and neighbors on Guile Road and wildlife using the area. There was a recommendation in here that that the Conservation Committee buy this property for conservation purposes, not you know, building houses and destroying, you know, last pieces of property that are, that are wildlife refuges. And, you know, would be funded in donation in part. That would be an ideal situation. I don't believe Nottingham needs more construction. I don't believe little Guile Road can really handle all of this going on. I, I can say seven houses is certainly much better than 14. But the, there's still going to be the effects that happen, the wetlands. I mean, what about the wetlands? You can say what you want. This is going to impact. So. Now, what was the other part here?
Linda, I think we just wanted you to read the letter.
Well, it's hard, Kathy, because parts of it are talking a lot about the 14-unit housing development, but I can try to pick up. So I started with the wildlife impact and the proposal development property. It's the last remaining unobstructed wildlife crossing of Guile Road between McCrillis and Route 152 in Lee. And all you need to do is drive this section of Guile Road to see that this is true and irrefutable. Loss of this property to development shall result in further and irrevocable loss of wildlife and critical wildlife habitat in the town of Nottingham. Ask any resident or other frequent traveler on Guile Road. Most can attest to frequently witnessing wildlife of many types crossing Guile Road in this area. Local hunters, woodwalkers, walkers, bikers, cross-country skiers and snowshoers can attest to the types and abundance of wildlife on both sides of Guile Road and crossing the road at this location. Local outdoors people can also attest to an abundance of wildlife using the field of this property and the use of this property as an important wildlife travel route in thorough way to P. Porridge Brook and beyond. And this is the part I was getting at. It is proposed that this property be purchased from the current owner, who is not the developer. who is not the developer, but by the Town of Nottingham Conservation Commission, with funds previously proposed for this purpose augmented by donations for the conservation of this important wildlife habitat in thorough way and for the perpetuation of current non-destructive use by Nottingham residents. We should not allow the last remaining unobstructed wildlife crossing of Guile Road between McCrillis and Route 152 in Lee to disappear due to the development. There's also talk of swales and pumpable settling basins or ponds for the production of wetlands. Line drainage containment, swales and pumpable concrete settling basins or lined pumpable settling ponds should be installed between all residential properties and the access road to prevent road salt, sediment, road surface chemicals, herbicides, pesticides, and residential surface runoff from reaching the wetlands. The developer should be required to present detailed engineering plans for these swales and settling catch basins or settling ponds prior to any further discussion of this development. Now, we talked about the groundwater level monitoring wells. And you know, having other plans in place should there not be enough water for abutters and everyone else. And with the drought, that is an issue here. The light pollution we talked about, the noise pollution. Any mitigative measures must also be presented and the cost to be borne by the developer and you know, keeping the noise impact down with the increased traffic, homes, trees that are cut, and also just the noise right now from the Lee Raceway that impacts us. Traffic safety on Guile Road, the proposed access road is located between a compressed S curve and another S curve at the poorest visibility point on Guile Road. Now, I don't know if that's going to hold true with the seven house plan, but that was a concern that was, that is brought up about the safety on Guile Road with the access road. And the developer should be charged with preparing a plan acceptable to abutters, local residents in the town to address this issue. Before this development can be approved, the developer must be responsible for the cost of any necessary mitigative measures. These measures must be implemented before the construction phase of any development beginning. And how would the town deal with this issue? The developer should be responsible for the cost of any mitigative measures. Increased traffic congestion on Guile Road. The developer should provide a professional assessment of the impact of the development on this already high level of traffic on Guile Road, especially during rush hour periods, and provide recommendations and plans for mitigation of those impacts. And again, how would the town deal with the issue? The developer should be responsible for the cost of any mitigative measures. Pedestrian safety on Guile Road. The developer should provide a professional assessment of the impact of the development on the already large number of pedestrians presently using Guile Road and provide recommendation and plans for mitigation of those impacts on the difficult section of Guile Road abutting the development property. Again, how does the town deal with the issue? The developer? He has to be responsible for the cost of any mitigative issues. Underground power and communication lines. To minimize visual impacts, all electric power and communication lines from Guile Road to and throughout the proposed development should be buried underground. The developer should provide plans and attest that this requirement shall be implemented to the town's satisfaction. We talked about the grave sites and the human remains. The developer and his or her contractors must understand, be prepared for, and make provision for the discovery of grave sites and human remains on the property, in which case the area must be immediately cordoned off and the proper state authorities called in to determine the proper course of action for the protection and preservation of the burial site and remains. It's still unclear whether there's one or two sites in that piece. No one said definitely and yes or definitely no. So it needs to be uncovered, so to speak, no pun intended. We understand that you, as our elected planning board, have the grave responsibility to interpret and uphold the vision and values written in our master plan. Just because a developer can satisfy the regulations for subdevelopment does not mean that every open space in this town should be developed. We would ask that you carefully consider our stated concerns and the overall impact on the rural character, historic heritage, local environment, and the town's infrastructure before you approve this or any of Mr. Falzone's plan to develop this property. In addition, we request that in-person planning board meetings are used for the discussion of this and other proposed projects within our town. Virtual meetings cannot provide the necessary level of contemporaneous communication needed for the, for the board and participants. Although challenging, we believe that this can be accomplished following the state COVID-19 meeting requirements in the old Nottingham School Gym with appropriately spaced tables and chairs en masse if deemed appropriate or if individually preferred. Many more interested residents would attend, I'm sure of that, and be more involved in all of this as they were the first meeting. It was standing room only. And lastly, we request a site walk through all, through by all interested stakeholders prior to any further movement on this project. We believe that there are many interested individuals who are not intimately familiar with the proposed development property, including members of the planning board and conservation commission. We would hope that with more firsthand information, the planning board would be better equipped to make a decision about this property. Sincerely and respectfully, the Guile Road Abutters residents and friends. Thank you very much for your time. I do appreciate your hearing this.
Thank you, Ms. Morissette. That's thank you. I'm going to touch upon a couple of those items before we continue with the public hearing. And I know the applicant had his hand up, but we'll continue through and so we don't end up in a back and forth situation. But just to step back for everyone, first, when you, when you're speaking, if you could, just state your full name and address for the, so we know if you're in a butter or
I'm so sorry. I apologize.
That's okay.
My name is Linda Morissette, and I live on Guile Road.
Thank you. And the design review is one step above. There's three possible options for applications come before the town. A conceptual review, very basic, non-binding, no notifications to abutters. A design review is the next step. It allows, it's still non-binding. Meaning we can have higher level discussions with the applicant, but whatever we say and they say is still non-binding in nature, but it allows us to have a little bit more of this discussion on a plan. As for human remains, I know that's been addressed several times on the past. It's good to keep it at the forefront. The applicant has stated in the past that, you know, he has no desire to incorporate, to run into them and is going to take steps to try to identify if there's any in the area. That is also governed by the state historic Resources Division. Underground utilities generally are required as part of our subdivision regulations for new subdivisions. Hydrogeologic studies are usually required as well for major subdivisions. And then, and then we use the master plan as a guide within, when we create the subdivision regs and the zoning regulations. Traffic studies can also be conducted depending on the size, and depending on the size of everything. Alteration of terrain permits are required usually by the state. And fishing game usually gets involved in those two when they're impacting sensitive areas. And the applicant works, has to work with the state at both levels to obtain necessary permits. So sorry about that, everybody. It's bedtime for my kids, so they were coming in to say goodnight. So we'll continue on. I know we had Megan Henley that had raised her hand. And so we'll, Ms. Henley, are you still here?
I'm here, yes. I just have one additional comment for the board to consider. Obviously, so I live one mile from the site. I'm not in a butter. And obviously, we are here because this affects us directly. And the only comment I wanted to add for the board to consider was just to maybe look at the, the owner and the fact that she owns, she and her family own other properties around Nottingham and the surrounding towns, but obviously we're concerned with Nottingham. The Diane Monte, she does not live in New Hampshire anymore, and she is retired. So I think that it'd be useful for the board to just kind of consider what interest she has in maintaining her properties here. And I think obviously her interests are financial. And so I just think that the board should maybe engage in a conversation either with the owner or just thinking more broadly about both her and her family and the properties that they own and what kind of message it sends, you know, what questions you have for her about her and the developer about the issues involved with, with adding additional buildings in the community and how that might impact future decisions on other land things that she has. And that's the only comment that I wanted to make for the board to consider.
There was a comment earlier too about the conservation commission and fund. So when we get to it, I'll have Ms. Mooney speak towards that and how those are utilized and how they can be utilized legally and such. And as for the subdivisions in town, a landowner can appoint an applicant to be their representative as this applicant has. So at that point, the board's discussion is really with, with the appointed applicant, appointed individual, which is Mr. Falzone and Mr. Cole. So there's land is a, is considered a resource in multiple ways for, in investment for a number of people. So there's, we're a little bit binded by, by law. And so what we can do as a board and what we have authority to do, you as a public have a lot more jurisdiction in that, that sense than we do. So we had another hand raised, identified as Little C. That individual still here and still want to speak?
Yep, it looks like she's on Rich's screen now.
Okay.
So I'm about done with you guys. Just make sure you state your first and last names and your address.
Hi, this is Carrie Pascoe. I am in a butter and I live at 125 Guile Road. I just want to make a brief comment to think about things on this road futuristically. And I think that by looking at a seven lot over a 14 lot is beneficial for us at this point because I know that right down the road, on the other side of the road, Diane Monte and her brothers own more land on that side as well. And what they're working on with this lot and the number of units on this lot, we could see the same thing happening on the other side of the road. So I just want to point out to the planning board that having only seven on this major lot, this big parcel is definitely going to be more beneficial if in fact we start to see Diane and the Diane Monte and the DeBertos make movements on the other side of the road headed down towards the cemetery. So thinking futuristically that this is not the only lot that the DeBertos and the Montes own, there is more. So limiting the number of units on this particular one that Mr. Falzone is looking at today would definitely be beneficial if you're thinking futuristically what this road is going to look like in 20 years from now. So that would be my other additional comment. I'm done now.
Thank you so much. And there was a question about sidewalks as well. We legally cannot conduct a sidewalk until after we've received an application as a board and acted upon it, meaning that we've accepted it as complete. At that point, we can schedule a sidewalk. We generally do schedule sidewalks on major subdivisions. But again, we can't legally do a sidewalk until we've got to that point of, of, of the process. So do we have any other abutters that would like to speak?
Kathy Moundsinger.
I'll get back to you, Kathy, in a moment if that's okay. Just want to make sure no one else that hasn't spoke yet gets a chance. No, okay. There you go. Kathy, you should be open now.
Okay, I'm just sorry and saddened that it's an either or, either seven or 14. I think all of our issues are the same concerns whether, no matter what amount it is. I also would like to see some kind of stipulation and protection with the back half that's wetlands to protect it from maybe someday having a through road all the way through and back into the property that's behind it, which is a huge property as well. If we can somehow conservation or protect that from further development, that would be another asset. Also, I think it would be beneficial for the board to just do, even on this call, it's not as effective when we're virtual as if we were all personally in a room stating our opinions on this issue. So if there's somehow that we can virtually relay our disappointment with this piece of property being developed, raise your hands. Thank you.
Thank you all. So do we have any, anybody else that would like to speak for, against, or just general questions? If not, I will go once. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the board at this point and then allow the applicant to address some of the items that came up. But Ms. Mooney, would you mind speaking? There was a question about the conservation fund and how those can be utilized. Would you mind speaking briefly about that?
Yep, not at all. The conservation fund is town managed, but it is governed by the supervision of the Conservation Commission. So the Conservation Commission does not buy property or conservation easements per se. We will review a project and decide if it falls under high conservation values. And then we would hold a public meeting with the select board, and then they would vote to release monies for this project from the conservation fund. The town has purchased two conservation properties that have already been protected by conservation easements under the federal program NRCS Wetland Protection. That particular fund pays up to 100% of the development value of a property, reducing the value of the property to something that the town could afford to purchase with monies in the conservation fund. The scope of what this project would cost to the town, even with soliciting donations, is probably pretty prohibitive. I understand that members of residents who've lived on Guile Road have attempted to contact Mrs. Monte to see if she would be willing to sell it to them, and then they would put it under conservation easement. But they've been very frustrated in trying to make contact with her. So I don't know if a letter from the planning board is under our jurisdiction to send a letter to her about this, but it's something to keep in mind. And I'm going to move sideways a little bit. The last lady that's And I'm going to move sideways a little bit. The last lady that spoke, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. When Mr. Falzone came and spoke to the Conservation Commission, he indicated that he would place deed restrictions in lot, for lot number seven, in the seven lot subdivision that would prevent further subdivision, that the abutting lot is to be subdivided in the future. So there would be no access through lot number seven if the abutting property does get developed down the road. That would be a deed restriction. Have I covered everything that?
Yep. Thank you. And it looks like I missed someone. Joanna, would you, on the public hearing, I apologize, would you unmute that individual labeled as Conrad? There you go, sir. And I'll just identify again, and we are.
Yeah, thank you, Ed. And actually, my question was answered with Sue's last comment. We just wanted to make sure that that 35-acre piece, which is lot seven, could not be further subdivided. And I'm happy to hear that there will be some restriction on that. Thank you.
Was there any other board comment before we go back and to Mr. Falzone and Mr. Cole to? I'll go back to Mr. Cole and Mr. Falzone. So if there's anything else you wanted to mention that we haven't addressed?
Yes, I would. We've already filed through Beals Associates with the state pertaining to the location of the small cemetery, because we had already employed a firm that thinks they know the general area, but we didn't want to attempt to do anything because we were advised that we should only do it under the protocol of how the state tells us to do it. We're employing a firm out of Portsmouth that has equipment that can penetrate the ground. And we're going to proceed, if we're going forward with the seven lot subdivision, to go do that in compliance with the state. And the state would then require us to find the boundary, and then we have to meet the state setback. I own four or five cemeteries, and I've been through this, of 25 feet of open space outside of whatever the limits are. So yes, all of that would be done in any case, whether we were doing the original 18-lot design, the 14-lot design, or the seven lot. We know we have to comply with that regulation.
And for that process, Mr. Falzone, just enlighten, so generally, it's historic research, try to identify a general area for where a cemetery might exist, and then the onsite work is done there and to define the limits of it. It's not the entire parcel. It's where cemeteries are expected to have been historically correct.
Correct. And we've already got written communication of how to do it to our engineers and then to our scientists, now to a company that specializes in it. And it's not inexpensive to do. I can tell you that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Cole, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Oh, no, I think there was quite a bit of information that we can certainly, you know, take into account, but I think the goal this evening was to really get a feel of what way the butters and the board felt was the best way to go. And I think we've accomplished that. Now we have our next steps, I believe, if the board feels comfortable with seven lot, we'll go to the zoning board.
Yeah, and Steph, Ms. Casella, is this something we're, it's okay to do like a straw poll for kind of thing, where members kind of give their general nod either way, which they prefer?
Yeah, straw polls are fine. We do not need a motion at this point.
Before I do that, is there any other board comment? Okay, so I'm gonna officially close the public hearing for this unless, for some reason, we continue the review. I'm gonna go around and just put every member on the spot, because, and do a roll call. If you could just please indicate if you have a preference towards a seven lot or 14 lot, so that to give the applicant some direction, which way to go. So I'll start with Mr. McKinnon.
My preference is still the seven lot layout.
All right, thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, same here. As I mentioned, actually, the first time the applicant was out, the seven lots, much more desirable.
Thank you. Ms. Mooney?
Seven lot.
Mr. Eaton?
Seven lots.
And Ms. Gass?
The seven lot.
And Mr. Davies?
Seven lot.
There you have it. Ms. on that side, so I think we've got all the questions, so.
Well, excuse me.
Yep.
Will your poll vote be in written form, such as the Conservation Commission did to the planning board? Just so the ZBA knows we met with you to get your opinion?
We can make sure it's recorded in the minutes, if that's sufficient. And at this point, Mr. Falzone, the design review is limited in nature, three meetings, 90 days. I don't think we have any, did you have any desire to have a continuation date or anything?
Not unless I want to torture myself.
Okay. Well, I thank you, thank you all for being here tonight and for speaking and including all the butters and everybody else. So, thank you.
Great time, thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to case 20-006-SPR. This is a continued site plan application from Devon Tayac for a site plan review of horse boarding business with a future plan for training and riding lessons, properly located at 108 Stage Road, Nottingham, identified as tax map 43, lot 34, sub lot A. So just to bring everybody up to speed, the applicant was here previously. We had an overview of the plans. It was to, for the applicant to have a horse boarding and riding lessons facility that she had purchased, that use had previously been used by the prior owner, although there might not have been a site plan on file for it. We conducted a sidewalk. Some of the members of the planning board conducted a sidewalk last week and met with the applicant and were able to see the site, see the current barn being reconstructed, the riding ring, and the outdoor paddock, and the overall layout. So before we continue, I'm gonna just jump to staff, Ms. Casella, to see if there's anything we should touch upon before I kind of go back to the board and applicant and in public hearing.
Sure. So I think we had kind of left off at the last meeting with the nature of this application and that it might not require all of the requirements for a standard site plan because it is an ag use. It was formerly a horse boarding business and is going to be so in the future. So right now, the applicant has not submitted any of the mapping or actual site plan flat requirements. In its staff's recommendation that not all of that is needed. I think the board should discuss what exactly is needed on file and what the board needs in order to accept and approve this application. So anything that the board deems they don't need will need a waiver, and I can work with the applicant on that to make sure all of the waiver requirements are met and documented so that it's an easy process at the next meeting. So really, what I need, what I would, what would be beneficial for me is for the board to discuss exactly what is needed to be on file.
Thank you. So the sidewalk had identified a couple of things, we'd gone through a couple of questions with the applicant. Is Ms. Tayac here tonight?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you, Devon. So we had left a couple of questions, just to, and I don't know if you've had a chance to get answers on these. So I'm just gonna run through them in order. Restroom facilities for visitors apart from, so keeping people out of the main house, but to identify restroom facilities, we're gonna be onsite. That's something the code enforcement officer can probably clarify for you if they're required. Were you able to find out if there's any state regulations specific to horse boarding and such?
I couldn't find anything because it's, since it's an agricultural building, it falls under ag and not commercial.
We discussed the lighting on the property. The plan is downlighting. You'd indicated a preference to keep it pretty dark out there. And we just indicated, you know, any lighting would, should be downlight and not directed up towards the sky. You had mentioned that you plan on having the business closed usually around dusk, so 7:30 or 8:00. Again, to reduce noise and light-producing activities. We discussed that there'd probably be minimal number of vehicles entering or leaving the property on a daily basis. And that there didn't have any plans for shows or anything like that. Currently, the driveway is unpaved. There's no plan for allowance of storage of horse trailers beyond your own personal ones. And then the only other thing we would have is make sure everything's up to code by the fire department standards. Manure disposal, minimal onsite. It was gonna be, majority of it would be taken offsite. Setbacks appear pretty good from any of Butter's properties. We didn't, weren't able to see any of Butter's homes from when we were there. Possibility of two to three part-time employees. And the renovated barn, looks like it'd be about 30 by 60, with about 20 stalls with some hay storage above. And you do have personal horses that would be in a separate barn. And I think that, I think that addressed pretty much everything that we kind of identified onsite. So at this point, is there any other board comment? It sounds like we need to have a little bit of discussion as to what we want to see on file for a site plan for this and look to either waive or the other requirements.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just chime in on what I, my, I guess it's kind of an assumption as to maybe why there never was a site plan previously. And I'm thinking at this point that it may be because of the agricultural status of the business. And so I'm just questioning whether there is a real need for a site plan in this case, but maybe some provisions along with the application.
So before we, are you raising your hand, Steph?
Yeah, I can, I can address that. So formerly, we did look into this. Formerly, it was a horse boarding business that predated the need for a site plan, but it was documented on the tax map or the tax card. At some point, that status lapsed, and it was taken off the tax card, and that's why it now needs to go through the site plan process to reestablish that use.
Thank you, that's helpful. And I don't remember if we can open and close the public hearing on this, but just to, I do see more people on tonight. So I don't know if anybody is, if there's anybody that's on the meeting tonight that would like to speak for, against, or just general questions about this application, ask at this time that you raise your hand. I'm gonna give it one more minute. And see none, right? Steph, Joanna, nobody? Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing, thank you. So back to the board, so if this had been continuous use, we wouldn't be here tonight, because it was like the use and continuation of it, just different owner. The only reason it's really here tonight is that there had been a lapse in use. It does sound like it in general meets the intent of the town. We're an agricultural town. It's either in the agricultural district or the town center. So at that point, we just need to discuss what we would like to see for, I'm trying to get back to the notes, sorry. What we'd like to see on file for it. I don't think, I don't think an engineered survey is required. I think a hand-drawn plan for this level is sufficient. Given the setbacks, as long as applicant maintains the proper setbacks for our butters in that it doesn't increase in scope beyond kind of what we have discussed tonight.
Mr. Viole, I have a question, more for Clarice. So my understanding is, is there, there's no new development proposed? There, I see there's a possibility of replacing one of the barns, but it sounds like they're just trying to keep everything as is, maybe fix up some stuff and then just reopen. Is that my understanding?
Correct, yeah. The barn that had been there was in poor condition, so they had it removed and are replacing it. They're bringing on a small barn, which is all within the same kind of footprint of the others for their own personal horses. But other than that, there's already the indoor riding ring and the outdoor paddock that are already in place.
Okay. I also agree, I don't think a engineered survey or site plan would be necessary on a case like this, especially hearing, unfortunately, I was able to make, I wasn't able to make the sidewalk, but hearing that, you know, there's obviously no issues with setbacks to a butters. I would support not requiring an engineered site plan or survey. I think we nailed it with some of the notes on the sidewalk. So I think that's, I guess, I'd be in favor of just some general notes. I did see there was some sketch information included in the application. I think it's, nothing changing, I think that's fine.
Anyone else?
Just a note, Mr. Chairman, I mentioned that I was going to check with somebody that I know that has a similar horse, well, similar situation. And, and yeah, so what I've, I've found from a conversation there is it seems that most of these, I'll call it a business, but they're treated almost in a personal use way. So that's, that's the information basically, in short, that I got. No real regulations, other than occasionally a kind of a, so many acres per horse, or so, so many horses per acreage, but that's about it.
So I think, I think we could easily build into any condition of approval, you know, that the applicant adheres to all state and federal guidelines associated with this type of business.
Sure.
So, sorry, Ms. Casella, so back to that, for the site plan, is, does anything get recorded with the registry of deeds? Do we have something formal that we have to, would have to require the applicant, you know, meet a certain, you know, level of detail on a plan that gets recorded, or is a hand-drawn kind of sketch sufficient?
Joanna, Joanna, do we file with the registry for site plans?
I was told no, we don't have to file site plans.
Okay. So in that case, it's just a matter of having something on file in the office that encompasses this discussion, basically. And the layout of the property so that if there's any other questions in the future, we can refer back to it. So in that case, you know, as long as you guys, I don't know if anybody has the checklist in front of them. For the site plan, I don't think it was included in the application, um, but I can quickly run through it if you want.
Yes, Steph, if you could do that real quick?
That'd be great.
Great.
Sure, um, so just for the general plan information section, that's section two. Devon completed all the, the rest of section one. So title block information, drawing title, name of subdivision, location of subdivision, tax map, lot number, name and address of owner. Date plan, scale of plan, sheet number, name, address, phone number of design firm, and name and address of applicant. From that section, I think all we need is name versus the drawing title, location, map lot. Devon's address and her name. Um, and contact info. Number three is revision block, don't think we need that. Planning board, number four is planning board approval block. Number five is certification block for a surveyor engineer, um, doesn't sound like we're gonna need that either. Number six, match lines, seven zoning designation, eight minimum lot area, frontages and setbacks. That could be an easy thing to just put in a note on the side. Nine, list of FEMA sheets used to identify the hundred-year floodplain. Ten, um, is a note about construction. That's, well, eleven, erosion control measures note, twelve. Identifying that it'll be recorded with the town. Thirteen, materials and methods for construction note, fourteen and North Arrow, again, an easy thing to put on. Fifteen, location and elevations of the hundred-year flood zone. Sixteen, plan and deed references, seventeen. Series of notes including purpose of plan, existing and proposed use, water supply source, zoning variance, um, special exceptions with conditions. List of required permits and permit approval numbers. Vicinity sketch, plan index, eighteen is boundary of property. Nineteen is boundary monuments. Twenty is existing streets. Names, statuses, right-of-way dimensions, pavement with dimensions. Twenty-one is municipal boundaries, if any, I think this is right smack dab in the middle. Twenty-two is existing easements, any drainage, slope, utility, temporary, no cut zones. Vehicle or pedestrian easements, visibility, fire ponds, roadway widening easements, walking trail easements or other. Twenty-eight, or sorry, twenty-three is designation of proposed lot, that's more for subdivision. Twenty-four. Lots contiguous uplands, um, acres and square feet, twenty-five wetland delineation. Twenty-six, owner's signature, twenty-seven, required setbacks, twenty-eight, physical features. Um, I think these would be beneficial to put on there, any buildings, wells, septic systems, stone walls, paved driveways or gravel drives. Location and name of any streams or water bodies, location of existing overhead utility pools, um, or towers. Two-foot contours, um, in this case, I don't think that is needed either. Thirty-two, map and lot numbers, again. Um, and that's it.
So I would agree that it sounds like most of this can even just be jotted by hand on the side of plan. One thing I think might help speed up, um, and maybe help with scaling, uh, I know there was the original hand sketch. Trying to get the general shape, is if there's any way to almost have a, uh, an aerial as the base. It sounds like we might be able to just, if, if we're gonna be using it, we could just label on an aerial image. All the existing elements that satisfy, uh, some of the checklist requirements and then just jotting down setbacks and some of the other general notes. And I think it's, that seems like it would handle. A lot of the requirements within the checklist and there's definitely some that. I think a waiver is reasonable, uh, for this use.
I agree, I agree, so this is Mister Veal, so, um, I think from that list that we just went off the site plan checklist. Which if anybody needs to find it, it's on the non-AM, the planning board page under, uh. Applications and forms and then project application, it's a, the whole checklist is, is there, about seven pages in. So Ms. Ms. Casella, of these. Not to be on the spot, but I'm putting you on the spot. I feel like a lot of them are, are appropriate for a waiver at this level. Again, a, a non-technical aerial view or, or plan is, is, I would think would be sufficient. But I do think it would be beneficial to have some of those items marked such as the, uh, you know, the existing, the existing structures and such and, and poles in the, uh. In the, in the driveway, just that it, it's a reference for future, if, if another site plan had to come, come before the town. Okay.
Yes, um, I'm just trying to go through and mark the ones that I said were good to have. Do you want me to just run through which ones? We should waive or which ones I recommend we waive?
Yeah, and, uh, and. I can have you, if the board agrees in, then we can have the applicant work with you or in staff to try to just formalize that waiver. And we can always act upon it and get it, I think after the fact is sufficient in this case.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so I have. Name of subdivision, which is two B of section two, this is all of section two. Two B. Two G, scale of plan, two H, sheet number. Item three, revision block, item four, planning board approval, item five, certification for engineer or surveyor. Item six, um, match lines. Item nine, the FEMA floodplanes. Item ten, the note for construction. Item eleven, erosion control note, item twelve. This is all gonna be. With the town, so that's fine. Thirteen, materials and methods note. Item fifteen, location and elevation. Item seventeen, oh, I'm sorry, item seventeen D, zoning variances, item seventeen E. Permits and permit approval numbers, seventeen F, vicinity sketch. Seventeen G, plan index of all sheets, I'm assuming this is gonna be one sheet. Um, item eighteen, item nineteen, which is the boundary monuments. Item twenty, which is the street information, item twelve, or I'm sorry, item twenty-one, municipal boundaries. Item twenty-two. Devon, do you know if there are any easements on your property?
No, I'm not sure.
Okay, so I, I want to just check on that, if there aren't any easements. We don't need to do any of that, um, but I will mark that to check and make sure that those are just not applicable. Twenty-three, designation of each proposed lot, in this case, not applicable. Twenty-four, um, A, existing lots, I'm gonna suggest that we. Do make a note saying, um, you know, what contiguous uplands there are, um, if we can find that information. That might be an easy calculation depending on what is available on the tax card, um, it's been a while since I looked at it. Twenty, item twenty-five. Delineation of wetlands. Item thirty, location of utilities, item thirty-one, uh, that's the two-foot contours. And item thirty-two, um, is map and lot numbers of abutting owners. And that's all of them.
And, and there was no wetlands identified, uh, on the sidewalk and there's none identified on the, uh, the tax maps. As well, I just pulled them up and looked at the wetlands maps layer, and there's none, uh, identified there. That's helpful.
That was my only question, is if we knew if there was any on the property or nearby and then maybe a note would be required, but if not, then that's waivable?
We didn't witness any in the, on the sidewalk, uh, Ms. Mooney will correct me if I'm wrong. And there's, again, there's, yeah, and there's none that were identified on the, uh, on the, um, the tax maps.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, so, I was quite a bit there. So I'll bring it back to the board, it seems like we can. The, the consensus appears to be that, uh, this is a pretty minor site plan. And, uh, we can work with the applicant to waive a, a number of items, um, and they can work with staff to kind of draft up that, that waiver. So if everybody, if anybody would like to make a motion to waive the requirements of the site plan application. Sections that, that Ms. Casella had read off. I think that'd be appropriate.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to move to, uh. Approve the waivers for case number twenty dash zero zero six, uh, SPR. As read by Steph, I missed the first few. And to be, uh. To be, uh, completed with staff.
Thank you, uh, motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
That's Mister McKinnon. Motion and second, uh, roll call, uh. Start with Mister Anderson?
Yes.
Uh, Mister McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Mooney?
Yes.
Mister Eaton?
Yes.
Ms. Gast?
Yeah.
Mister Davies?
Yes.
They get everybody and, and myself as a yes, uh, that's unanimous, I think I captured everybody. Is there any additional? Sorry, is there any additional board comment or question? Ms. Gast, did you say something, I'm sorry?
Oh, no, I didn't, sorry.
No, it's okay. So at this point, I think it would be appropriate to continue it one more time to give the applicant the time to just bring those items together. The plan is, is we've kind of desired it and then I think we could take final action on it at the next meeting. Steph, does that sound appropriate? Yeah, uh, Ms. Ms. Tylek, if, if we were to continue, um, the case, we normally continue to the next meeting, uh, which would be November fourteenth, I believe.
Eighteenth.
November eighteenth, we don't wanna push past that too much because then it gets into December, uh, due to the holiday. Would, does that seem like sufficient amount of time for you to kind of work with staff and draw that up and get that solidified?
Yes, that works for me.
Okay. And Joanna, is that the right date, is it the eleventh or the eighteenth for our next meeting?
It is the eighteenth.
It is, thank you. So at this point, I think a motion to continue to the eighteenth would be, uh, appropriate.
I'll make, uh, I'll make the motion to continue case twenty, uh, dash zero zero six SPR to November eighteenth.
At seven PM.
At seven PM.
Your voice got a little strange there, seconded by Ms. Mooney, uh, so we have a motion and a second to continue to eleven eighteen at seven PM. Mister McKinnon, start with you, roll call?
Yes.
Uh, Mister Anderson?
Yes.
Mister Eaton?
Yes.
Ms. Gast?
Yes.
Mister Anderson, I already went to you, you're on there twice, Mister Davy?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Mooney?
Yes.
Myself as a yes, that's all, uh. That's unanimous, uh, so this case is continued to November eighteenth at seven PM. Moving on, uh, the next item is our public meeting for proposed zoning amendments. Before I take that, go to that item, I'm gonna jump back out of order on this one. The public comment, just to make sure, I do see a number of individuals still on, uh. And I wanna make sure that if they're here for the public comment section, which is when we open the meeting every night, every meeting to, um. Just general comments and, uh, some items of its. Plan specific, we can't necessarily answer it directly. So is there anybody here that was here for just the public comment section of our agenda? If you are, just raise your hand, if not, we'll continue on, on our agenda. Okay. All right. Item on our agenda is to review the proposed zoning amendments, I'm gonna take them in order. This is the time for us tonight to kind of try to finalize the, the language because the, the final draft needs to be available for the next meeting. Let's start having the public hearing section of it. So we will start with the well-in ordinance, um, conditional use permit. And I don't know if Ms. Casella or Mister McKinnon wanna kind of give a quick overview of that or if there's any changes to where we kind of left off from the last meeting.
Um, I don't think I've seen any changes, Steph, do we, I think, I think there was generally positive reviews on that.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Ian.
I don't think, no, I'm just saying, I don't think there was any edits needed or if they were, maybe some minor verbiage.
The only thing that I have and I didn't add it, um, because I think I need a little bit more information from the board is about vernal pools. There had been talk about a twenty, maybe, or I'm sorry, twenty foot or to ten-foot vegetative buffer. For a no disturbance, so I'm just not sure where to put that in this. Within the, within the conserva, wetland conservation area, um, and I need a definite number. For, for that buffer. Maybe Sue, you can elaborate on that a little bit more.
Sorry, I didn't know where I was, if I was muted or not. We really have no additional information on, on, um, changing or, or changing the vegetative buffer, no disturbance. The general rule is that we discussed last time at the last meeting was that twenty feet seems to be more than adequate. And filtering out insults to vernal pools. And additionally, um, there had been recommendations if there was to be a viewscape, a clearing. So people can just look at their little vernal pool from their kitchen window, that that disturbed, that would disturb no, no more than twenty percent of the perimeter.
So is that something that in the current format of the draft that you see a way we could easily. Insert that language? And, and then I'll bring it back to the board to discuss that, but, um. So I could, I could see that going in to the, to this section. Or a change to the stream protection ordinance, where we call it a stream protection overlay, stream protection and, uh. Wetlands buffer overlay district, but I think we're getting, we'd get into a major revision at that point. So would this be an, an area, maybe not adding the buffer to the section, but, uh, add it as a, a section that is not, uh. That filling a burnt vernal pool is basically. that filling a burnt vernal pool is basically, except that would be considered a well-in, I believe, uh, that that would fall into the section that is not, does not qualify for a conditional use permit?
I believe so. Yeah, I'm kind of thinking maybe it goes under, um, section two, so that would be B two. Um, and adding that as a, a twenty-foot setback for vernal pools.
And that's for just general disturbance, correct? That's what we're kind of talking about here is the general twenty, twenty-five foot no disturb buffer, right?
I believe so. Sue, can you confirm that?
Sorry, I had to mute myself. My oven is, my oven fan just came on. Um, walk me through that again, please.
Yeah, I was just asking, so I just want to confirm, so the, I'm just reading through, I, I agree with Steph that maybe this belongs in section two of the well-in conservation areas section control. Um, and that maybe it could just go at the end of that paragraph, but it would be described as a twenty-foot um, no disturbance buffer, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I just wanted, I just wanted to confirm.
No, no disturbance vegetative bu- buffer.
Okay.
Is that language enough, just putting that in there in the list of setbacks that's already um, listed in that section two pollution control section is just adding twenty-foot no disturbance vegetative buffer around vernal pools?
Steph, I have to say, I'm, I'm not a wetland scientist. I think that, um, if that's a question that you could put out there to someone who has this expertise and then that person could give you a, a yes or a no. But I, you know, it's not my area of expertise.
Based on my experience, uh, we might just want to, I mean, if you want to keep it simple and say, um, you know, it'll be along lines, we must maintain a twenty-foot, uh, no disturb vegetated buffer from um, any vernal pool, you know, as mapped by a certified man for wetland scientists. Um, I don't think we need to get into, because those have to be performed in the spring, but that's, that basically falls under, you know, anybody that's certified would know that, so.
Yeah, that's good, Ian. I like that. And, and it keeps it simple.
So my suggestion would be that we separate it out from number two, just to keep it clear, because we're trying to, just like we do with critical wetlands, we try to identify them separately as a unique section to make it clear, because pollution control generally is, is specific to like septic and such.
Yep.
So I would suggest that we add it either under number two as a new number three, or we go and add a number, uh, well, it would be number eight now, critical wetlands would be seven. Uh, so critical wetlands are identified as number seven. I would suggest that we throw a number eight in there for, um, vernal pools. And add the language that you're, you're mentioning, uh, the no disturb buffer and that, and then as a board, we should decide if, if, um, if we want to make these ineligible for conditional use permits as well.
I, I agree that it might make sense to pull it out of pollution control, actually move it to the end there. Um, I would also agree that this probably shouldn't be allowed under a conditional use permit, seeing as how vernal pools, with how rare they are, they're seen with exceptional value based on every project they show up on.
So I want to give everybody else on the board a chance to kind of speak, that those are two insertions. Um, obviously, we'd, we'd rather get, do this the first time with the proposed warrant article, uh, than try to revise it again next year. So I'd like everybody to get a chance to kind of speak toward those items or if they'd like to. Okay, seeing none. Uh, so Ms. Casella, is there anything else we missed from that draft before we, um, before we kind of finalize the language and then I don't think we need a vote at this point to push forward. Uh, it would be after our public hearings, correct? Yep.
Yep. So next meeting, I will present my final drafts to the board. Um, and that's when you'll vote to send it to a hearing, uh, next meeting in December. Um, I will add that language. I will send it out. Um, I'll also send it to Sue and the Conservation Commission. Um, make sure that it holistically approaches everything that we've discussed with them. And that should, yeah, on that one.
Um, so our important dates say, state that November eleventh, final drafts presented, vote and send to hearing. But our actual next meeting is November eighteenth. Is there a confusion there somewhere? Um, because November eleventh is Veterans Day, which is why we are not meeting on that date.
Okay. Um, I will double check that that's fine with our timeline. Um, I worked backwards. I must have missed that, um, with the state recommendation, but I, I'll double check on that. It should be fine, but I'll double check.
Okay.
Are the other meeting dates right? December nineteenth and January thirteenth?
Uh, December ninth, is that what you said?
Nineteenth.
December ninth is the, the second Wednesday?
Yeah, my birthday.
Sixteenth is, um, I mean, sorry, December ninth, not nineteenth. Yeah, is, uh, our next, our December meeting. And then January thirteenth.
Yep.
Yeah. So we need to fix that in our, our, uh, important dates listing.
Did you, did you say January thirteenth was correct or was it was?
January thirteenth is correct. We just need to change the nineteenth and the eighteenth.
Sorry about that, guys. I will double check and make sure that doesn't mess anything up.
Otherwise, we will be holding a special meeting on November fourth. Which, which nobody's going to want to do. So we'll hold a special meeting in between. Maybe not the fourth, maybe the ninth. Um, all right. So we'll move on to the second item, which was a stream protection, uh, ordinance or overlay district. Which I believe is what we decided upon. Uh, so, so Steph had sent out, um, some revised language on this based on our prior input. Just kind of cleaning it up and making it conform a little bit better with our, um, our current ordinances. Uh, I had a couple of questions on here, um, for district boundaries under the, under the first and second order streams, we define it as from the, the high watermark. But for third and fourth order streams, it says the mean high watermark. Is, is that correct or are they, should they be the same? Do you know, Ms. Mooney?
I do not know.
Okay.
I do, I do want to say, um, to preface this discussion that Sam and I met, um, via Zoom last Thursday, and we discussed this particular ordinance and, and particulars and design and format. So, um, the commission did have some input in how this was put together and, and what was included.
I don't know if we can just, if, if there's a way to just kind of confirm that or if it's not really that important. Um, the definitions section, I don't know if we should keep it here, uh, and or also move it to the definitions section, just to have it uniform with all our definitions. I think it's helpful to have it in there. Um, but I also think it's important to keep it with all the others, too. I don't know if anybody has any thought on that. Um, figure out some language for the fourth order streams and higher and how to kind of define those. Um, or if there's just a way to incorporate that. But Steph, are you confident in like kind of adding some language for that?
Um, and
Is that fifth order?
Did want to mention that if anybody got a chance to look at the map that I sent out, we do have a fifth order stream. Um, which part of the North River. So we do need to revise that a little bit, trying to zoom it exactly. It becomes a order. Hold on.
That's okay. So we either, do we either keep it as in higher or just add fifth order and because it's unlikely we're going to get a sixth order stream in town anytime soon.
Um, yeah, that works. Um, I just need to clean that up then.
And then I had a question for buffer. I was thinking about just, just keeping it short and sweet, those areas adjacent to the stream. I, I understand kind of having additional language in there is helpful, but I mean, it's possible that you have an area like this that maybe doesn't have a vegetative buffer, if it's been, you know, washed away or it's gravel or, or whatever. So I don't know if it's actually beneficial just to shorten that down to just those areas adjacent to the stream.
Sue, do you want to weigh in on that?
Well, that's an interesting point. What, um, where, where are you, um, seeing this, Ed, on the document?
In the definitions, uh, after first or second order, third order, there's buffer.
Oh, I see.
Ed, I'd also add that too, uh, yeah, if we remove that second half, because it actually mentions extending from the edge of the stream bank. But then if you, you know, we referenced the high watermark and the mean high watermark is where this buffer is taken from. So we say edge of stream bank, that's adding, it's different than how the terminology is up top. So if we just remove it, we just let the language before it govern.
Those areas adjacent to the stream that fall within the S, the SPD, uh, stream.
Yep.
Under administration.
Can I back you up a bit? Um, on your buffer definition, um, the language could say something like the areas adjacent to the stream shall not be disturbed and which may contain the natural vegetation extending from. And that would take care of curbs in the river that might have scoured the vegetation. Or even bridge abutments. Shall be preserved as is and which may contain the natural vegetation.
Sue, are you in favor of removing the language that says from the edge of the stream bank?
Um, I think so, yes.
I, I, I think the issue with it is unless you put a, a distance on it, it's, it's ambiguous. Because, so we, we talk about non-permitted uses later, and I think that's kind of where the buffer language comes in. As to what's permitted, you know, no excavation or filming, no removal of cutting vegetation within the, within the district. Except where permitted. So I guess currently the, the way the buffer is there right now, it, it's kind of ambiguous. It doesn't have a distance, it's just a which to me, I don't know what adjacent is. If it's five feet touching, you know, twenty feet. Or, or if it's, goes back to the, the distance of the specific district.
I think I should reference the specific district. Depending on what water stream it is.
So maybe say something like those areas within the, the, um, stream protection, uh, overlay district. But again, is it needed or do we capture that? Are we capturing the buffer area based on the non-permitted uses? And permitted uses? Steph, does that make sense? You, you see what I'm seeing for, because right now I feel like that buffer i- is kind of ambiguous. It's, it's supposed to be a definition, but it, it's trying to be uh, more of a rule.
Yeah, I was just thinking about that also. I think that it could go either way. Do we have an existing buffer definition in our zoning ordinance? Does anybody know?
I don't believe so. So, no, I think this is the first we've been adding them in is, um,
Okay, um, I don't know if anywhere else it's still, that word still exists after all those revisions.
We do have a definition of buffer in the zoning ordinance. Um, it's defined as land area with winwit, within which adequate vegetation is maintained or provided to visually separate or screen one use from another or to minimize potentially negative impacts on surrounding areas. So I'd say that's more so for development of homes. Um, but I think I'm in agreement possibly removing it from the definitions section of this because we actually get into defining what the setbacks buffers need to be under boundaries and then, like Ed said, we touch upon it again under non-permitted uses.
In administration.
Yeah, yeah. So three, because otherwise I think we're going to end up creating a definition that references those other sections. So then there's almost not a need to define it if it's covered in multiple sections.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree too.
I'm with admin, administration section stuff. Um, it says the non-again planning board shall uphold the applicable restrictions and I understand that we can, we can uphold it while during a, uh, an application, but af- after that, it's not our purview. It'd be code enforcement and probably board selectmen. So do we?
Um, well, I'm sorry, go ahead, Steph.
No, I was going to say, what does Sue think? So go, go ahead.
Well, when we receive, um, reports of pop- uh, possible violations of buffers for our large lakes and ponds, it usually happens because an abutter, um, complains to the Conservation Commission that they think something, um, un- nefarious is going on. So Sam and I and other members would, would go down and, and walk, um, um, close to the property. We might even have, have to wade through the water and take photos and then report it to the enforcement agencies for the state DES Wetlands Bureau. I don't know how we're going to trash this out if this is just a local ordinance. I think we have to think that through as well. It might just be that someone reports to the code enforcement officer that someone is, um, dumping fertilizer in a vernal pool or I'm, or I'm sorry, in a stream or something like that.
Yeah, I think it goes with kind of unfortunately like the zoning now, you know, if, if, if there's a current, something occurring and we don't know about it or no plan comes before us, then we don't really have jurisdiction over it. Uh, code enforcement does, but again, they have to become aware of the violation occurring, um, before any action can be taken. And then at that point, it goes through legal channels of code enforcement. And then ultimately, I think the select board is the one that decides on whether or not to pursue additional actions. I'm fine with leaving the language in. Uh, I just want to make, make that clear that, you know, we can, we have the authority over it when it's before us, but there's nothing we can really do, um, after the fact that I'm aware of.
Yep, that's correct.
Uh, Steph, you had a Steph, you had a comment, comment number three, planning board members review. Are there any additional conditions or requirements that should be included in this evaluation? I had a note about if a waiver or conditional use needs to be added. But like we did for the wetlands overlay.
Okay.
I don't know. I mean, that's just something for thoughts for. Otherwise, I think we're fine with we've already listed permitted, non permitted. So I don't know if we need a conditional use or a waiver at this point. One other question on that same administration section. Application shall be referred to the Nottingham Cats Conservation Commission for review and comment prior to the zoning board hearing. We had something like this happen for the planning board where we did want to include that at one point. And I think the language was different that they shall like present to the Conservation Commission before coming before the planning board. And we aren't illegally allowed to do that until we take kind of ownership of the application, meaning we've accepted an application as complete. Is that language, is that okay for the zoning that if it goes to zoning that it also concurrently goes gets notified to CONCON?
Sue, do you want to talk about how you guys came up with that?
I think it might have been a statement that we found in another town's ordinance. In actuality, the Conservation Commission answers to the select board for things that we that come across our plate. But however, if there's an application that comes in, recent legislation at the state level has put us under the authority of the planning board. And this is going to be an application before the board.
I was leaving it in there too, you know, again, if it comes up as a question, it could be reviewed, but again, not all the stuff that goes before zoning is going to come before the planning board.
To that end, Ed, should there, like you said, saying all applications shall be referred to the Nottingham Conservation Commission for review and comment prior to the zoning board hearing. I kind of agree. Should there be something said upon acceptance of the application, like you said, like can can they be forced to go to the CONCON before their application has actually been accepted by whether it's us or the ZBA?
Yeah, it's not necessarily saying that they have to go before the CONCON and saying the application at least has to get to them. Let's get the conservation commission so they have a chance to overlook it and provide feedback to the appropriate board. That's going to be. So I guess we can move on from that. I just had a couple of clarifying things for streamlining the next section, the non permitted uses number five. You can remove there shall be no and just leave cutting, removing vegetation within the stream district except for permitted shall be prohibited. I think that just cleans it up. The last.
Number four for that and.
Number five, I'm sorry. Just to start with cutting and removing vegetation.
Do you want to do that for all of them? Because non permitted uses, they all start with there shall be no.
Okay. It could go either way. So you could go leave it, there shall be no and then.
Um, on that, if we're going to keep the first, you could remove shall be prohibited because that's just the inverse.
Correct.
So there shall be no cutting, removing, removing vegetation within the stream protection district except for permitted under the provisions of this section. And then just remove shall be prohibited.
And then the last sentence or two of that unbroken vegetative cover for wildlife. I thought we might move that sentence somewhere to the purpose section instead. And then the where it starts with basal area shall be in the cross section. I think that'd be helpful to move that to the definitions. Trying to see where that one is. Your comment number six, what and how is to be reviewed? I was wondering if we add language that we have in like in other sections where like in the wetland, when we talk about filling in the wetland and such where or going into the setbacks is a where we use the language that says like where no other options are feasible. Like just pulling language out of one of those other items.
Okay. That's under, so that's for number four, correct?
Yeah. All right. And then from six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, so six to 11. I think we can remove the words within the stream protection district. That's what we're talking about. So I think it just cleans that up a lot. And then under permitted uses. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, what was that last one?
Six to 11 in the non permitted uses. Just just remove the words within the stream protection district. Of all those. And then when permitted uses, I was thinking number six, removal hazardous trees could be could be moved into the exemption section is number three. I think that goes with your comment 11.
As a tree is approved from town code enforcement officer. You wanted that to go to exemptions?
I think it makes sense there.
Okay.
So that was all my kind of notes. I know, I'm sorry. I want to make sure everybody else gets a chance to speak as well on this one.
Well, that was very thorough, Ed. Thank you. And thank you, Ian, as well.
Just to close out the comments on the permitted uses, I'm just reading between the difference between the permitted uses and the exemptions. I guess I would, I know you have a comment 10 of possibly combining them.
Yeah, I just felt like some of them, there was there was some overlap and I wasn't sure where to draw that line.
I could see moving those to the end of permitted uses unless that would cause confusion, but yes, it's not, I guess they're both just such small sections, we can keep them separated unless anybody else feels strongly to combine them.
I like them in two separate sections.
Okay. Um, Sue, how do you feel about putting number six for permitted uses into the exemptions?
That sounds good.
I'd agree with that, yeah.
Do we have any other board discussion on this before we have Ms. Cassell finalize the draft for the the next hearing?
I have a question. Would a basketball court or a ball field be considered a structure? I'm looking at number one exemptions from regulations.
Wait a second, I think we defined structures somewhere.
Yeah.
Structures, we have a definition for structures in our subdivision regs which should match zoning. That which is built or constructed with a fixed location on the ground or attached to something having a fixed location on the ground, whether installed on above or below the surface of land. Structure as defined by the Nottingham zoning ordinances. How's that for helpful? It's written by a lawyer.
Sue, to answer your question, I guess my interpretation would be that a grassed field wouldn't be considered a structure. There's nothing rigid about it.
Field would require some fertilizing though.
What's that?
I'm not super familiar with the upkeep of ball fields, but would that require fertilizer?
Sometimes.
I don't know why you want to take care of it, I guess.
Well, it might also require drainage.
Right. And then the second you put a drainage structure, then you trigger the structure, I guess, the definition.
It's not defined, so the zoning goes a little bit further. It gives you an A and a B. Structure includes but is not limited to building, to a building, barn, swimming pool, manufactured home, mobile home, septic system, well, gas, liquid storage tank, deck porch balcony breezeway carport. Garage shall not include boundary wall fence driveway in kind replaces septic system. So you're getting more into like a impervious surface. So I guess it would depend on if it's paved or not or.
Well, a clay tennis court. It's certainly a lot different than one that that is gravel or or even asphalted. I'm just trying to think, you know, kind of ahead.
I mean, to me, it's not falling within the permitted use. So it's not, I see what you're saying. Is it is it kind of catching the exemption of? Well, no, so I think we're fine with the with the current language. Because it's not, there's nothing that says structure within the permitted use section. So it looks like it'd be non permitted there. And unless it was preexisting, it wouldn't be exempt.
Okay.
That's my interpretation. All right. Do we have any other board comment? I know we're getting late, so I just want to, but it's important that we get through these tonight, unfortunately, just because of our timelines. All right, move on to the building height grade amendment. Steph, did you get anything more on this or does anybody else have comment? We had some presentation last meeting from the fire chief. And then the code enforcement officer indicated that that might be problematic. It might be too too strict if we went from the lowest point. But trying to find a happy medium.
I have not heard anything else. I know Dirk Dale to discuss it and possibly came up with some language, but that's.
Have the language here if you guys want to hear it.
This new language Joanna?
Yes. Dirk said that the language could be something to the effect of no occupiable structure may exceed X feet in height in any district. Height is measured from the average elevation of the finished grade within five feet of the structure to the highest point of the roof excluding accessory unoccupied protuberances such as antennas, flagpoles and the like.
We have a definition for finished grade.
We what?
Is there is there a definition for finished grade? Anywhere?
That's not one that I recall seeing in our definitions.
That's what, I think that's what Dale was really bringing up initially here was he, he didn't have that. And so, so I wanted to mention, I actually, I thought the chief was coming on again tonight because he said he wanted to. I know he's going to, I know he has an issue with being flexible on this, so to speak.
He, just to be clear, he wanted measured solely from the lowest exposed point?
That's it. Yeah, his his wording was total building height shall not exceed 35 feet. The height is the vertical distance from the lowest point of the finished grade within 12 feet of entire foundation to the highest point of the structure. So he is his equation basically is the safety of being able to reach the highest point with the equipment we have, our firefighters have.
Which are ladders.
Somebody goes five feet out and then drops down at a one to one slope and then you can't put a ladder on it.
Think, yeah, he's looking at the extremes is what it what it is. I was, you know, I'm thinking based on what Dale's input was last meeting. That there would be denials by using that definition. So so in denying an application based on that, we would be probably flooding the zoning board with with applications.
Yes, based on, let's see, there's about 35 building applications and he said 80 to 90% would be going to the ZBA for relief with the recommendation that's before you right now. But the recommendation that Dirk presented would not flood the ZBA.
The current language for billing height just mentions. Sorry, I'm getting back there again. Building height, maximum building height shall be 34 feet measured from grade. I think that's the problem, right? Is that just says from grade and it doesn't give defined item in the past years ago, I believe it was, we were advised that grade was defined in in the code manuals. And that's where we didn't have to be specific. Apparently that maybe that's not the case or so I don't know that we have enough language in front of us right now to, I don't want to push this, but I don't know. It's a little bit outside my purview. I see the code enforcers point, you know, if you have a house that's mostly under 34 feet, but they have a basement garage cut into a hill, you know, that could push it above that. But I also understand the fire safety side of it that, you know, in the end, you got to make sure that that there's a way to get to everybody safely and find that compromise between the two, right? Some open suggestions on this from all the board staff.
Yeah, go ahead, Ian.
I'd say the definition that Joanna read off from Dirk, I would say is I would see that as a compromise. And what you mentioned is exactly what I was thinking is you go around town, you see a lot of homes where it's, you know, higher, you know, finished grade. it's, you know, higher, you know, the finished grade is higher on three sides, and then there's the one end that's exposed for the garage, which is a common, uh, form of construction. So there's still plenty of access for fire. And I know you can never predict exactly where you need your access, but um, I would say that the definition Joanna read is better than the current, um, the original.
And I just pulled up the legal definition for finished grade. And it sounds pretty sound. Would you like to hear it?
Yep.
Okay. Finished grade means the average elevation between the highest and lowest point of the finished surface of the ground measured around the perimeter of the base of a building or structure explosive of any embankment in lieu of steps.
That's a pretty good definition.
So is that, is that a possible workaround to this? Is that we add the definition of finished grade? The definitions?
Cause then we're getting away from the whole five feet from the edge, twelve feet from the edge.
So we'd have to change the definition of building height from, to say, instead of from grade to from finished grade and then add the definition of finished grade.
Well, see, that's taking, the difference that we see where Joanna, uh, gave us was an average grade. So not versus the lowest grade, which is what, uh, the chief was coming up with basically.
Right.
Yeah.
So was that?
Compromise.
I guess I'm trying to just avoid loopholes where someone can come in and build a fifty-foot tall home because, you know, the front half is in, you know, one story and the back half drops off completely on a, on a slope or something. So you have this huge wall that, that's not accessible to the fire department.
I originally would, in thinking about this, was thinking along the lines of a waiver. But then that really doesn't carry, you know, a new owner can buy that, that home even though the original builder, I mean, probably would be a builder, would be taking responsibility for the, the extra height that's there.
Right. So one option would be to, to take Mr. Groh nice's possible solution, um, which I would recommend maybe changing it because you changed it instead of building height to no occupiable structure. Uh, I don't know if we want to do that or just keep it as, you know, no building may exceed thirty-four feet in height and any district height is measured from the average elevation of the finished grade within five feet of the structure to the highest point of the roof, um, excluding accessory unoccupied protuberances such as antennas, flagpoles, and the like.
So if we were to, here's a question. So in the, in what, when our fire chief put out, he put out actually two, two definitions. One describing a gable roof structure and the other one of a flat roof structure. So I typically, and I say typically, the flat roof structure are going to be more ver, more, more typical of a commercial building. So I'm wondering if we want to also add something in that speaks to that.
So I, I think at this late juncture, I think one option for us now is to possibly punt this back to the board chair, um, Mr. Groh nice, um, to try to come up with some finalized draft language that we can all present, uh, at the next meeting and then, uh, decide on whether or not we're going to push it forward to the town, or if we push it off till next year so we can, um, kind of really look at this again and get all the players involved. Come together and help us understand the things and loopholes and everything else that we're getting into.
Ed, can you, can you reread that revised definition?
The what? Sent through as a possibility?
Yes.
No occupiable structure may exceed, he has XX feet, which I just put in thirty-four because that's what we have currently. Uh, feet in height in any district. Height is measured from the average elevation of the finished grade within five feet of the structure to the highest point of the roof excluding accessory unoccupied protuberances such as antennas, flagpoles, and the like.
Okay, so that's basically Dirk's definition that he had sent, but you put in the thirty-five feet.
I, I added thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Just because that's what we have currently in our ordinance.
Oh, sorry.
The chief had thirty-five, but I figured, give us a foot of wiggle room.
Sounds good.
Uh, does anybody else on the board have, uh, thoughts on this one, or would you be okay with, uh, trying to get our final language for the next meeting and, um, and we can move on it then?
I'm good with waiting.
Yeah, I'll agree with that.
I didn't hear what Leanne said.
She said she was good with moving on.
Moving on like.
Moving forward with it.
Right now? Oh yes, I agree too. If we kick it down the road, it, you know, it's another year lost for, um, this, this type of attention.
And if we do it wrong and people object to it, then we can change it for next year.
Agreed.
Yeah, we can always, because we can always vote to not send it to warrant article after we get the final drafts and hear the, the public hearings. So, um, okay. So that was it for the, the three that we had is kind of like the high priority for this year. We had others, but, um, we kind of decided to, to try and keep it to those for this year. Does anybody else have any that feel like we really need to have them on bef, bef, before, uh, I think we're probably too late at this point. No? Okay. Uh, we'll do a quick round of staff board, uh, updates. I'll start with, uh, Ms. Casella.
Nothing for me.
Uh, board selectman, Mr. Eaton?
I'm at the select board meeting. Um, again, we just went over our committees, uh, gave updates on them. We had, um, Sean come in from town, um, and gave a update on things that they're looking for in the future. Maybe equipment that would need to be replaced and also spoke about the need of, uh, labeling some Nottingham roads during the, uh, you know, uh, frost season, but when it's melting or whatever, to keep certain size vehicles off our roads. Um, but there'll be more to come on that. And talked about the election. And there's over a thousand, I believe a thousand absentee, uh, votes have been, come to the town already, so. Can't wait till it's over.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Mooney?
Um, this time of year, the conservation commission is monitoring the, um, conservation easements that are held by the town of Nottingham, and they include, um, the Friend family on Route one fifty-six, Mendons, which is off Route four, and Trenoco on Case Road. The Kimball family forest was monitored earlier, um, this fall. And we will also be monitoring the deed restricted properties up in Highlands, housing development off Route four and, um, Freeman Hall Road, nineteen, um, deed restricted properties there that in the watershed of Little River. That's it.
Thank you for, for doing that and for the ConCon volunteers for, uh, taking that on. Uh, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, we had, um, at Stratford Regional Recycling Roundtable, um, on the twenty-second and a lot of good stuff, but I'll just share my, the takeaway that I, I saw is, uh, um, mainly, there was a survey prior to the round table to, to kind of see what maybe part, um, Stratford Regional could play in regional recycling and, um, one of the, the questions was about, uh, could Stratford Regional, um, be helpful in pulling to, in getting documentation on what we're doing as a recycling, people, so to speak, uh, to, to know uh, what kind of, uh, costs were, it, it, what it's costing us to get rid of our garbage, what, what kind of money we might be making, um, let's say for cardboard or for one of the recyclables. So that, knowing that we could actually let people know that and use, um, something like a sandwich board or a whiteboard to, as when you walk in, you might see, see something to the effect of, hey, this month we made X amount of dollars, uh, recycling metal, um, so. Just to, um, really build a sense of pride about what we're doing there. That's my takeaway.
I think that's a great idea. We, that was some items we touched upon when we had the, uh, recycling subcommittee, I think eight years ago from the board selectmen and, uh, and I don't think we ever got to it, but doing like a chart or something. And I think that's great. Like you said, we should be proud as a community for having the oldest continuously operating recycling center. Every ton of diverted trash, it's green in the environmental sense, but it's also green in that we make a little bit of money on it and we don't spend the hundred dollars for the, the tipping fee. So it, it offsets in, in two ways. Uh, yeah, that's great. I'd love to see something like that. Uh, Mr. McKinnon?
Something for me.
Ms. Gast?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Davies, if you're still there?
I am here, I'm all set.
Uh, Ms., uh, and Ms. Erin Darcek, that's Joanna.
So just one thing, um, Conrad stayed on and then I, um, sent me a message. He asked if we could talk about starting up the master plan update subcommittee. I told him I would bring it up during this time and get back to him. I realize it's a late hour, so maybe I should just put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
I think that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
And, uh, only thing for me is, thank you all, y'all, Dirk, when he's back, that, um, for the long meeting. Well, the last thing we have are minutes, um, I don't necessarily want to push those because they're getting pretty old, so. I've had a chance to review them. I know a few others have sent edits in. I think unless there's somebody, anybody that feels that they would like a certain amount of minutes held at this point, I think, uh, moving on those would be, would be good tonight.
This chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of July twenty-second, August twelfth, September ninth, and September third, twenty-third, twenty twenty.
Sorry, guys.
All call, all is a favor. Start with, uh, Ian?
Yep.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Ms. Gast?
Yeah.
Mr. Davies?
Yes.
Ms. Mooney?
Yes.
Now you can tell what you order. You show up on my screen, uh, look.
Is there a reason why we weren't putting the October twenty-first sidewalk minutes on that as well?
They weren't on the agenda.
Okay. Sorry, there should have been. Can we accept those as well?
We would need another motion.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll put those on the next meeting.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
That's it. Uh, entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Anybody else? I think we're all set. So, alright, thank you, everybody. Long meeting, two night, two in a row. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Ed.